Regular board meeting in the Miami'sburg City Schools. May we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on tonight's agenda is roll call. Mr. Amsler?
Uh, here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes, I'm present.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
I'm present and Mr. Homan?
Here.
Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion for tonight's agenda, please?
Let me that we adopt tonight's agenda.
Motion by Mr. Toadvine?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any questions or comments or concerns in regards to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, may we have a roll call? Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next is the approval of the minutes dated October, no, how about September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two? May I have a motion for those minutes, please?
I move to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting held on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion by Mrs. Neese?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daffler. Is there any questions or comments in regards to those minutes? Uh, hearing none as well. May we have a roll call? Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Next is the financial report dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion for the financial report?
I'll move for the approval of the financial report dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis and seconded by Mr. Toadvine? Mr. Espy?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about where we're looking in terms of the revenue expenditure analysis through September. We're trending about one million higher in revenues right now. Cautionary, uh, I want to be cautionary about that, though. Uh, this is due to primarily some increases that we had with direct payments that we will not receive property tax income on for this year and potentially next year. So we just want to make sure that that we're aware of that. Um, and also we're showing expenditures to indicate a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars favorable to the forecast. That is a good sum of money, however, it's it's less than one percent of what we're projecting going forward. It's actually less than half of a percent. So, um, when we look at the operating surplus that we're expected to have based on those numbers, it's showing around three hundred and eighty-four thousand. We look at the month, when we compare last month or last year, September to this September, we're a little bit higher in local tax reimbursements, higher in state revenue, but we're lower in all other revenue. And that's just going to be from timing. Um, when we look at an analysis between July and September of this year, that's where we're seeing that a little bit north of one million in the revenues, um, uh, which we are expecting to have slightly higher revenues anyway because of the fair school funding plan. Um, but our expenditures are projected to continue to rise as well. Would we look at the month of expenditures when we're comparing September twenty-one to September twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-two? Salaries and benefits are up three hundred and eight thousand, but that's to be expected uh, because the step increases occurred in September for our teaching staff and and other staff that that support in the classroom. Um, so those steps with also, um, step increases and then increases on the base are leading to that number. All in all, when we look at the forecast, we're expecting our estimated amounts for regular classified salaries, professional technical services, which are purchase services, to be an increase. And that's typically due to, again, the negotiated agreements and also inflation that we're seeing with purchases of goods and items that we have to purchase in terms of purchase services. So, all in all, um, we're going to continue to monitor monitor this every month as we talked about in the finance committee meeting. As we have more and more months of data, we're going to be dialing in the forecast and I will be bringing you the November required forecast at the next board meeting.
Any of you have any questions in regards to Mr. Espy on the financial report?
Just like to thank him for a lot of hard work that he's put into trying to figure out where we're going to be at for the next five years. I think it's probably the like, including the past two years and the next three coming up is probably the hardest I've ever seen to make any type of a judgment on where we're going to be at because we've got so many balls up in here from the state and shit talking about changing the funding already. And, uh, and I'd just like to 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 thank Mr. Espy for trying to make it at least clear as mud because you're doing, I mean, you did a great job. And I'd like to commend you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing the other comments, may we have a roll call? Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is recognition of staff and students. First on the docket is the district student of the month, Olivia Taylor from the high school. Mr. Lewis?
The Miami'sburg City School September district student of the month was Olivia Taylor. She was nominated by Miami'sburg High School Assistant Principal Jeremy Saylor. Mr. Saylor said Miami'sburg High School is proud to select Olivia Taylor as the September student of the month. Olivia is an amazing young lady in the way that she interacts with the staff and students at MHS. Her compassion for others and their differences is something her peers should aspire to develop in themselves. Olivia has strong belief that everyone should be included. She started best buddies at Miami'sburg High School because she realized that some students with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities had a hard time making friends. She wanted everyone to feel like they belonged to the Miami'sburg school community. She worked closely with school administration and the special education teachers to bring best buddies to Miami'sburg. Best Buddies Ohio provides one-on-one friendship and leadership development programs for individuals with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities, IDD, in Ohio. Olivia is a true leader in helping students make new connections with their peers. Olivia assists in the planning of monthly events where students hang out with each other in and out of school. And her hard work and dedication to inclusion for all has been a big success. She's excited about what new experiences the new school year brings. Olivia's buddy is Andy and they love going to Roosters together to get Korean barbecue, wings, and dumpster fries. Outside of being a leader among her peers and a role model for all, Olivia is a varsity cheerleader for the Vikings and also competes in competition cheer for Legacy Extreme. In her free time, Olivia enjoys coaching cheer for the Minnagators and tumbling for the Firebirds. Olivia has a passion for helping others and volunteers in the daycare at Life Point Church. Olivia hopes that her experiences experiences in coaching and teaching younger students helps her in her goal to become a third grade teacher. Olivia plans to attend the University of Louisville and obtain a degree in early childhood education. It is with great pride that we celebrate Olivia Taylor as the Miami'sburg High School Student of the Month for September. Her personal strengths, positive impact on the school community, and dedication to inclusion and belonging for all make her a model student and deserving of this accomplishment.
It's going to be a very, it's going to look great on all the social media sites. It's going to look great, so. You're going to get all kinds of likes, I just know. It's going to be awesome. Do you want us to take one with your phone?
Yeah.
Okay, I could do that. Sorry before it goes away. I think it's working. We might get some funny ones. Okay, let's check to make sure I got at least one, one serious one, or maybe it's funny. They just look funny. Are they good? See, I told you I'm not going to be so funny.
Olivia? Thank you for being a fabulous role model for other students.
Yes.
Well, not until she spills out that jaw, I'm kidding. All right, okay. Thank you.
Next is the Bear Elementary School presentation.
Hello and good evening. I'm Shannon Rupert. I have the privilege of being the principal at Bear Elementary. And I brought with me Courtney Christie, who is a first grade teacher. I almost said second because that was last year, first grade teacher. She also leads our after-school program and our student council. So she, um, wears a lot of hats. Um, today we are going to talk to you about how Bear students are making connections with our community. I'm going to let you start.
Um, so the first thing we did, um, I, um, we spearheaded this together, our second grade class last year in our after-school program. We were given the opportunity through an organization called Blankets of Hope to, um, write letters and receive blankets and write letters and then donate those blankets back to a local homeless shelter. That would be in need of those items. And then they pass those blankets out to, um, the homeless shelters and, you know, everybody who needs them throughout the winter time. Um, and it was just a really amazing opportunity to let these kiddos, um, you know, give back somewhere that, you know, maybe they didn't really know was in need yet. And they got to write the notes and the, you know, it's just a really cute little opportunity for the kiddos to give back. The blankets were donated to a shelter down in, um, downtown Dayton. And, um, I mean, the picture that you have up there is the article that was written about it in the Miami'sburg Times as well. And the woman in the picture is the, uh, woman who we donated all of the blankets to. And, I mean, my kiddos just loved being able to, you know, give back to the community in that way. And like I said, we did it in our second grade class and the after-school program as well. So there was about, um, I think it was about fifty blankets donated, so it was pretty awesome. And then our next event was our garden day.
And we hosted a family garden day and previously we had hosted in the evening. And we found that about fifty percent of our students could come in an evening. So we changed it up last year and hosted during the day. Um, we had, of course, all of our students, but we also had a hundred and twenty-five guests join us. Um, so we found it to be, um, that change just made a huge difference in who could come and be part of. Um, we did a picnic-style lunch. The adults had a lunch that was comparable to what the kids had. They got to enjoy lunch together. And then did multiple STEM activities, um, through stations. The parents joined their child's classroom and went through the different stations. Um, some examples of the stations, which are, um, they did a garden scavenger hunt. They made some pudding, gummy, um, pudding with gummy worms, so dirt pudding, not really dirt, of course. Um, but they made bubble solution and got to blow bubbles together. Pipe cleaner, bird feeders. They did a lima bean dissection. And the students made individual greenhouses. And then we had a tiny seed explosion to show how, um, it was a balloon. You filled it with, um, bird seed and then popped the balloon after it was blown up and the seeds would go everywhere. And it kind of demonstrated how seeds are spread naturally, um, throughout our our world, really, and how new seeds grow. Um, so the parents, it was, it was just great to see that connection and parents come enjoy that garden that the kids, the kids really do everything in the garden. They, um, work the garden, they harvest the garden. And then this year we were able able to recently harvest, um, forty pumpkins out of our garden. And kids did STEM activities with those as well.
The next thing we did at the after-school program as well is we, while we're showing kindness and compassion through cards, we wrote cards and decorated cards during the holidays. Those cards were then sent out to, um, the, um, sorry, I need to check my notes. This just blew out of my head. The Dayton Children's Hospital, so kiddos that were in, you know, the hospital during the holidays, they still were, they were still able to receive, you know, some love and affection from peers that are similar to them and, you know, be able to really have an opportunity to, um, you know, relate to kiddos, you know, maybe outside of their situation that they're in. And we also donated them to nursing homes. Um, Mrs. Aleg, actually, our fourth grade teacher, brought them over to the nursing homes. Um, and it was just a really great opportunity for these after-school program kiddos to, um, really kind of take a step back and use that compassion and empathy, uh, for somebody else in the community. So, and they, you know, they enjoy doing that, those little things. And they write cute notes and they tell them they love them and tell them that, you know, hey, we're here for you. Um, and it was the same with the notes that they put on the blankets. They were so heartfelt and so, you know, just empathetic and compassionate. It was really an awesome thing to see, so.
The next is our Girls on the Run. This is another program that we just started last year. Um, Jody Hall, our school counselor, heads this up. And then we have a couple of staff members who are coaches. Um, myself and Molly Mahoney this year are trained coaches as well. Um, they do a service project. Not only do they do the exercises and the learning about empowering girls and, um, through education, but they do a service project. And this year they chose to thank our firemen, or last year, they they thanked our firemen and our policemen. And they made them cards. And then Chris Amsler and Officer Copsy came and received those from the kids. They had such pride to give those and to thank, um, our our policemen and firemen. So that was great and we appreciate you coming and being part of that, Chris.
The next one, Kay, is November nineteenth.
It is.
It's going to be really warm, I'm sure, that day. You saw the pictures.
Oh, my goodness.
Snowing and windy and, ooh.
And you were a trooper. You ran the whole thing. So, um, it, that is a fun day. We had nine girl, we had eleven girls who participated in the, um, program last year, nine of which were able to go to the 5K and complete the 5K. Certainly throughout the season, we pick up our endurance for that. Um, this year we have seventeen girls. So, um, we are really growing that program and it is, it is so fun to work with them, um, twice a week throughout the fall. And we do hope that the weather is much nicer than last year. I think a couple of girls said, I think I got frostbite last year. I'm like, I'm sure that's not going to happen this year. So, but very exciting, exciting program. And, um, it it's so fun to do with the girls. I really thought at first I was just doing it for them and now I'm like, oh, I'm kind of doing it for me too. I love it. So, so fun.
And last but not least, this was done by our student council last year. My student council was a big environmental advocate group and they really wanted to do something to better the environment. And so I was given the opportunity to recycle plastic bags. And if you can think to yourself how light one plastic bag is, it kind of tells the tale of how many plastic bags we really have. And I mean, they are piled everywhere. We had to donate or collect five hundred pounds of plastic bags. And the company then uses those plastic bags and they create benches for parks and they create, um, decks that, um, people might want to build. And so in return for our donation, they, um, have given our Bear Garden a bench as well using the recycled plastic that we donated. Uh, and honestly, that was probably one of the most, um, community-driven activities we've done because people from other buildings were emailing me like, hey, you're the recycling plastic lady. And I'm like, that's me. Give me your bags. I went over to, you know, my neighbors. I was collecting bags everywhere. And I'm really hoping that this is, um, an activity that we can continue to do year after year and keep supplying that. And I mean, just thinking about all of those bags could have gone straight into the landfill. And instead of that, we have turned it now into something beneficial that we will all use. Um, so I think it's a really great opportunity. We partnered with a local church, a Farmersville, um, United Methodist Church, and they were able to donate some to us as well. And they helped us reach our goal. Um, but yeah, the kiddos, they were, I mean, they were loving. You can see our trash can there is overflowing with plastic. I mean, the bags were all over the place. And it's just amazing to think how many plastic bags we just toss to the side and we don't even think about. So if we keep it going, throw us your bags our way. We'll take them all and we will definitely get those recycled where you keep going, so.
And while we certainly didn't count them, I did look up on the internet, five hundred pounds of Kroger bags is about forty thousand five hundred bags. And we were able to meet that goal. So the kids are very excited about that and very proud. They come in with the bags off the bus and they're just so cute. Like they were just ready, looking to put them in the in the bucket.
And I, yeah, and I really thought how awesome of, you know, our student council to really take something that was, you know, near and dear to their heart. And they wanted to go and collect trash everywhere. I thought maybe that wasn't the safest option to go around and pick up trash on the ground. But I thought this was a great little sup, you know, supplement for that and they were all about it. It was, it was wonderful. It was pretty cool to see. So hopefully we can keep it going. All right, and so we plan to do some of these things, like we said, again this year and keep it rolling and add things to it as well. So, yeah, thank you for having us this evening and we take a lot of pride in our little Bears.
Well, I'll be sending you some plastic bags.
Thank you.
I'll be checking to see who's going to run the 5K this year. I can't run. I have to work the registration.
Oh, okay.
So maybe you can hand me to the registration table.
That's great.
Maybe I'm going to run like in between, who knows?
Do a few jobs.
That hill's a killer.
It really is.
There's a big hill. No, you'll be fine. No, all be fine because they're all.
I sacrificed myself to give the medals at the end.
I think the doctor will let you have that arm and you'll be fine.
And you can walk it. You don't have to run it. That's what I wondered. A lot of the girls, yeah, a lot of the girls walk it instead of run it and that is fine. You can take the time that you need to just complete it. The goal is to complete it, not to necessarily get a time, um, for that event. So it's just, but it's been great, yeah. Yeah, I love how all the things you do for the community fit right into our strategic plan. I mean, it's so good for the kids. Makes them less self, you know, that makes them selfless and we need more of that in the world. I I do love the kindness and compassion for others. I think that's such an important thing to build into, um, the the curriculum and kids and really them just feel that. Because I do think kindness is just, uh, to others is so important.
I did a great job.
They do. We're proud of them. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is National School Psychology Week. It is recommended that the Board of Education recognize National School Psychology Week, November seventh, or yeah, November seventh through the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. This year's theme is Together We Shine, which is derived from How We See Hope After Several Challenging Years. We have all faced difficulties created by the pandemic, social injustice and inequity, economic stress and challenges to mental and physical health. Reconnecting with others and reestablishing the sense of being valued, parts of a greater whole empower students and adults to find purpose in hospitality. So we want to recognize National School Psychology Week, November seventh through the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Um, next is board discussion. Workforce development updates by Mr. Bob Newbauer.
Hello, thank you very much. Uh, Stacy Moore asked me to do a little update on some of the things we've been working on. Uh, as one of my responsibilities at the high school is the workforce development supervisor. I work very closely with Stacy, uh, and Michael Black to, uh, plan a lot of different, uh, activities. Um, so essentially, one of the reasons we kind of started heading down this path is for several years, education as a whole has told kids that, um, a four-year college is the only thing they should be striving for. And, uh, we believe that there are several options out there for people. Um, trade schools, apprenticeships, um, college with a purpose is important, but just going to college because you think you're supposed to is not necessarily the answer. And, um, there are just so many opportunities out there. And and to to go out and be a plumber, to be an electrician is just as valuable as going to be a nurse. We have some some great job opportunities that, uh, kids are being made aware of now. Um, we brought in a welding, uh, group last year that will be coming back and working with Mr. Hensley's, um, programs just so kids can see. And what they did was great is they brought, uh, their students from the welding school in to talk to our students. Um, there were some demonstrations going on. Every one of the students in the welding, um, school had full-time jobs lined up before they even graduated. So there's just some really good things out there that, um, we just want to expose our students to. Uh, we took some students on a trip to Manufacturing Day, to American Testing Company, to see just again, some jobs, um, that students can get right out of high school. And what we're finding is more and more companies, whether it be manufacturing, whether it be, uh, the trades, are hiring people right out of high school because they know their workforce is depleting, but their demand for what is needed is not. And, uh, they're willing to pay for people's training. They're willing to do a lot of on-the-job training. Uh, so we've taken several trips, Ohio Tech Day, Manufacturing Day, Engineering Day is coming up soon. Uh, we have our tech prep programs from the high school that are going out as well uh, to just seek what sort of career opportunities they can have once they leave Miami'sburg. Uh, starting next week, we're doing what we call power lunches. We're bringing companies into our, uh, common space during our lunch, our three lunches so that, um, students can have the chance to talk to apprentices, talk to, um, companies that are hiring right now. Uh, so this is not only a good thing for our seniors who may not have an exact plan for next year, it's a good thing for our freshmen and sophomores and juniors to start looking ahead at what they might do. Uh, we've also expanded this year down into the middle school. We're going to be doing some career exploration there. Um, we are going to have our tech prep students from the high school go meet and do an activity with our eighth grade, um, students just so they can see some of the things, um, if I tell them something, they may not listen to it. But if a high school senior tells them the exact same thing, they may be more apt to be looking for that. Uh, we also scheduled, we are going to take the entire eighth grade to the CTC this year, uh, in a few weeks. Um, and and we do that as as tenth graders, so the tenth graders can see what programs they want to apply to. But if you wait just until tenth grade, some of them may be credit deficient. Some of them may not, um, be prepared to go off to, uh, the CTC, uh, after their tenth grade year. So we want to get the eighth graders there, get them excited about something, so when they get to the high school, they can hit the ground running with a plan. Um, we've been using a program called Major Clarity, which is every student at the high school has access to. Uh, based on their interest assessments and the way they like to learn, uh, the the computer generates career choices for them so that they can explore right there on their time. Uh, we do take time out of flex period to do some structured things with it, but they have the opportunity to research trade schools, research apprenticeships, look at two- and four-year colleges. So, uh, we are looking to potentially have a construction career fair a little bit later on this year and pull some of our local business into that so we can, uh, generate some opportunity for them to look at, um, into that so we can uh generate some opportunity for them to look at um, you know, who's coming out of school and and who's who would be a good opportunity for them to to snatch up. Uh we just had last week, uh I just met with John Deere. Um there is a location in Germantown and a location in Lebanon. They are offering internships. We already have, I believe, five students that have applied to that internship which would allow them to start working there the summer uh after their junior year. They would then um, the John Deere uh locations would then give them flexible schedules so they could finish off their senior year. If people were still interested, they would actually provide um scholarship money to be able to go on and and get some certifications within John Deere. Uh we've got Sinclair coming in uh sh- sharing about their programs. We're partnering with Kettering Health Network um to to kind of talk about their programs. And what we're finding is people are really interested in partnering with a high school. So we have um so a a doctor who does all of his surgeries um using robotics. He is going to come in a little bit later on this year and speak to our robotics class just to kind of explain this is what you're learning now is a way to turn this into something more. So uh it's been great to partner with a lot of the local manufacturing companies and to hear from the trades. And I'm just really excited at the direction that we're going in the district and really looking forward to seeing it continue to go uh even down into the elementary schools. So. Questions or?
No, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. I mean, what we have out at Montgomery County Joint Educational School and everything that's going on out there. I know at this time, probably, I know Joe was probably gonna talk about, you guys did your walkthrough last week up there. I mean, I can't think of a better time with what you just talked about, Mr. Newbauer, to go ahead and if any of the board members or yourself would like to talk in regards to that um walkthrough. I, I mean, I'm sorry that I missed it because I was on vacation, but I know I'll go up with you at a different time. And I'm excited to go up there because I'm a big proponent and was just down at Warren County last two, last two of the three days doing fire training in their tower. Um and I'm just a big proponent of getting those companies into the high school, getting our students established because college isn't for everybody.
Yeah.
Um I didn't. I went in the Navy, you know? Um but I just think it's the more we get in front of our students, the more options we can give them, I'm all for that, one hundred percent.
I had a a meeting with a young lady today who's had a difficult time in school, but she found out about the Honda program at Sinclair where she could actually work as an intern while going to college. And she says, first time she's ever thought about going to college. And I, you know, this to see the excitement in her eye, because all she wants to do is work on cars, but she just didn't always see herself as somebody that would be in that that particular situation. And I think more and more, we're, you know, a lot of times the kids hear about the CTC programs, but it's almost too late for them to really get interested in it. So I think the 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 earlier we can do to promote that with the students and get them excited about things, uh I think the better it's gonna be. And then anytime we can partner with our local businesses, um to be those examples is just another step up.
Correct. I think it's great. I uh I was not a college person, started off in trade and eventually moved up to be part owner. So it is a uh, it's a great thing. It can happen. And it's awesome that we are working towards that. So that that's awesome. The exposure is great.
I think those field trips that we're gonna be taking in November with our eighth grade students, correct?
Yes.
I think that'll be a great way for them to see all of the changes that have taken place at the CTC and the new programs. And I'm definitely attending. That's it. So I have some favorite spots. Some lovely facility. Joe and um Nick and the team. It's amazing. So I'm so glad we're partnering there and then doing these opportunities and exposures so, you know, our students can see all the different angles and um, you know, pathways for the future.
Last year, we we had a career signing day and there were some kids who couldn't made it, make it. But this year, just like we do the athletics signing, we are doing apprenticeship signing in the trades and and the military and really promoting it um because we, because they should be just as proud as anyone else going off.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Well, I think, you know, um Bob, let's go along with a little bit about what you're saying there. Personally, I can remember when I was in school, science and math really got me going. You know, I mean, I was tuned into it. And uh you're talking about the young lady that's that's interested in cars. Now, that's what excites her. That's what she wants to learn about. That's gonna change her whole outlook on school.
Absolutely.
And even we're and and give her direction, you know? And uh I, what you're doing is reaching out to a lot, a lot of kids that would be going off a totally different path that might lead to some real problems down the road where it's gonna lead to a lot of positive things in their lives and families. So.
Are excited.
That's great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Newbauer.
I had zero college debt, by the way, too.
Joe, is there anything you want to add prior to move us moving forward?
Uh at this point, no. Uh I I hope uh you took notes in the tour room and follow up on you.
I'm ready.
Shannon, bef- I will say it's me over here. Your pumpkins, when I was out there earlier, I saw all the pumpkins that were there. Uh what happened to all the, what did you guys do with all those pumpkins?
Well, we did STEM activities with them first.
Yep.
And then we raffled them off and my kids take them home.
Nice. Okay. Um next is District Investments with Mr. Espy.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make this pretty short just because we're gonna be talking about this at the next work session. Uh but at the next work session, we're gonna be hearing from Red Tree Investments as well as Fifth Third um Investments, who we currently have to discuss options that the district has. Now that interest rates are starting to climb again, we're able to to start to get get that um interest uh revenue uh again, so we can start counting on that to go back up, which will be helpful for our finances. But we'll be discussing the different types of investments that are highly regulated by Ohio Revised Code. Um and so that'll be at the next board work session, which is November seventh.
Any questions in regards to that, Mr. Espy? Hearing none, we will go to Consent Agenda. We've got a number of items under this. Uh A is the approval of the overnight extended student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight extended student trips. Uh Myersburg High School Swim and Dive Team, uh Bowling Great, Bowling Green State University. Uh B is the out-of-state travel. It is recommended that the Board of Education the following out-of-state travel. Uh Region Five Head Start Association Conference will be held in Chicago, Illinois. California State Band Championships, uh the twenty twenty-two National Superintendent's Forum in San Diego, California, really? Are you coming back? All right. North Central West Virginia Honor Band and Symposium in Buckhannon, West Virginia. Uh NIAA workshop in Gaylord Opryland Convention Center in Nashville, Tennessee, and the Myersburg High School Swim and Dive Team at, again, at Bowling Green State University.
So that was in state.
Say again?
So Bowling Green, Ohio was in state. Why is that on out-of-state travel?
That should have been, it just should have been overnight travel, right?
Yeah, okay.
So we should probably scratch that one.
Amend that one? Okay. C is the approval of tuition-free sen- uh senior enrollment. It is recommended by the superintendent and high school principal that the Board of Education approves Emma Gayhart for tuition-free enrollment for her senior year. This permission is only granted to a twelfth-grade student who previously attended Myersburg High School as a resident pupil during her eleventh grade year. D is the approval of memorandum of understanding between the Myersburg City School District and the Teamsters Union Number nine five seven. Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters Union Number nine five seven. E is the approval of recognition of National Bus Safety Week, October the seventeenth through the twenty twenty October seventeenth through twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following. October seventeenth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-two is National Bus School Safety Week, and the theme is One Bus, One Driver, and Equals One Big Impact on Education. The theme of National School Bus Safety Week is derived from the poster contests uh the years before. The twenty twenty-two winning poster was drawn by Eon An Alment Grade School in Alamont, Kansas. F is the approval of per- proclaima- How do you say that?
Proclamation.
Proclamation, National Red Ribbon Celebration, twenty twenty-two. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following proclamation. Whereas public awareness is the key to effectively preventing drug abuse and to attending Ohio youth about the dangers of alcohol, tobacco, and drug use. And whereas preventing substance abuse within the communities requires cooperation from workforces, families, schools, and faith communities, and whereas this year's Red Woman Celebration, Celebrate Life, Live Drug Free, is a reminder that everyday Americans across the country make significant daily contributions to their communities by being the best they can be because they live drug-free. And whereas Drug-Free Action Alliances urges all Ohioans to wear a red ribbon, sign up for the Drug-Free Ohio and make a commitment to a healthy lifestyle. And whereas businesses, media, social services, government, schools, service organizations, religious institutions, safety forces, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this long-week celebration. Therefore, the Myersburg City School District does hereby declare, October twenty-third through October thirty-first, as Red Ribbon Celebration Week. We hereby encourage all citizens to participate in alcohol, tobacco, and other drug-free education and all related prevention activities, thus making a visible statement that we are all strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. G is the approval of consent i- items A through F. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve items A Alpha through F Foxtrot. May I have a motion for those items, please?
I move for the approval of the consent items A through F.
Motion by Mr. Toadvine?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daffler. Going back to A and B of the overnight extended trips and the out-of-state travel, those are self-explanatory with the exception of removal of the out-of-state on the Bowling Green.
Correct, yes. Yes. And the the swim team, that's just a normal recommendation, not knowing what the end of the season looks like.
Correct.
And as it appears, um travel is resuming for some professional development opportunities. So. And then C, again, tuition uh free seniors um enrollment, that's part of board policy if someone does move out of the district during this time. Um D, do you want to talk a little bit about the MIU? Um I don't really want to talk about the MIU, I guess.
I I can. Um so through the negotiation process, um when I first got to the district uh in October of twenty-one, we had discussed the need to really revisit um the insurance for Teamsters. And so um there were several options discussed. And what what we did is we worked with Haran, who you approved the contract for a couple months ago, to really start to dig into the data and um do some reworking of of the premiums for insurance are going, that are going to affect the district as a whole. Um but really be able to um work with the Teamsters to to provide uh more options um but at a more reasonable rate. And so uh we are not at the end of the marathon. We're at um the first leg. But we we do feel very confident that we're gonna get where we need to go and that we're going to continue to be able to do right by um our employees, but also make sure we're we're looking at the value um uh not only in terms of the healthcare offered, but the cost of the healthcare is it's our second-largest expenditure. So that's what this um signifies tonight. We did a lot of work with Haran, and they've been invaluable to us through this process. And we're looking forward to gathering more data going forward and continuing to work together to make uh make insurance as affordable as possible.
Good.
And then items E and F are the recommendations for National School Bus Safety Week and also Red Ribbon Week. That is a tongue twister. You did very well, Mr. Amslar. So, yeah.
It was a tongue twister.
It is. Red Ribbon Week is.
Anybody have any questions in regards to Consent Agenda and any of those items? No? Okay. Uh may we have a roll call?
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amslar?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Number four is the Human Resources Agenda Items. A is the approval of personnel reports cert- certificated and classified. B is the approval of personnel reports certificate classified and supplemental stifed. In both uh incidences, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment within the Myersburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. C is the approval of Human Resources Items A Alpha and B Bravo. May I have a motion for those two items, please?
I'll move for the approval of the Human Resources Items A and B.
Motion by Mr. Lewis?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Toadvine? Mr. Holman?
Nothing out of the ordinary, business as usual.
Good. All right. Any questions in regards to those? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Amslar?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Epstein.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Five is Agreements and Contracts. A is the approval agreement with Montgomery County Educational Service Center. Uh the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve an agreement between the Montgomery County Educational Service Center and the Myersburg City Schools to provide educational services from Graduation Alliance Incorporated effective July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. B is the approval agreement between the Montgomery County Educational Service Center and the Myersburg City Schools. Superintendent, Treasurer, CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve a service agreement between Montgomery County Educational Service Center and the Myersburg City Schools for SEL Consulate Services effective July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. C is the approval and agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center. The Superintendent, Treasurer, CFO recommend approval of the attached agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center for Auxiliary Services. D is the approval agreement between Myersburg City School District and Maximum Roofing. This is um in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. It is recommended by the Superintendent, Treasurer, CFO, and Director of Business to award attached roofing projects to Maximum Roofing Company as presented. E is the approval of Preschool Promise Memorandum of Understanding. It is recommended by the Superintendent and the Elementary Curriculum Director, Amy Dobson, to approve the attached Preschool Promise Memorandum of Understanding. F is the approval of amended medical service agreement for the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year. The Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following amended agreement with Southwest Educational Purchasing Council for Medical Insurance for the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year as presented. G is the approval of Memorandum of Understanding with the Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug, Addiction, and Mental Health Services Board. It is recommended by the Superintendent to approve the following MOU with the Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug, Addiction, and Mental Health Services Board, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. H is the approval of Memorandum of Understanding between Myersburg City Schools and West Ed. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Secretary or Secondary Curriculum Director, Stacy Moore, to approve the attached Memorandum of Understanding with West Ed to conduct a randomized controlled trial study on the use of Prisms VR in middle school and high school classrooms. I is the approval agreement between, uh, Contracts A Alpha through H Hotel. May I have a motion for those items, please?
I move to approve agreements and contract items A through H.
Motion by, uh, Mrs. Neese?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Toadvine. Going back to A.
Grant Alliance, that's a yearly contract that we approve. It helps our students for credit recovery or any type of situation where they may need to take an online course to get, to meet their graduation requirements. B, that is an agreement with our ser- one of our service centers. This is with, uh, Montgomery County for SEL. This is an additional SEL based on a grant.
Right, so this one is actually, you'll see further down in the MOU with Adamus, um, they have provided us with an equivalent of, uh, another's doing forty-five thousand. Um, the Kender has entered into a pilot with the Ohio School Office Initiative, where we have students become in staff, office coordinator, um, on staff to help teams, to support students and staff. We need a contract in that position in Montgomery County and their social emotional learning, um, department. So, those two kind of cross each other out because that contract is for that teacher, I'm sorry, for that, um, SEL consultant, but then that MOU is also a whole piece of that.
And then, C is the Warren County Educational Service Center.
This is, um, a contract, um, to service Bishop Leibold's students. So, this was sent to us, um, kind of after the fact, and we're going to talk about it then and now in my section tied to that.
Good.
And then roofing contract, Mr. Homan?
Uh, for maximum roofing, as part of, we look at our, um, PI Capital Improvement Planning that we went over, um, at a work session in terms of roofs. This is the next stage for this year. I'm going to go ahead and get this in and approved so we could hopefully have the supplies in, um, by the time that we can complete this stuff, um, over some breaks and summer.
Preschool Promise?
This agreement is for us to be able to survey our, um, our students in the area. It's part of the agreements in the past to ready, set, soar, and learn to earn Dayton. So, it allows us to survey parents when they register for kindergarten, to gather the data about students' preschool experiences. It's been something we've been doing in the past. Uh, the University of, we partner with the University of Dayton, and they help kind of, um, compile the data and then share that out with us. It's a great, it's a great way to determine our readiness, our kindergarten's readiness.
Item, um, F, we approved, um, one's last one, as John talked about, we went ahead and redid the PPO plan. So, in order for us to implement that, we have to bring it back to the Board to have your approval to move forward with that. Both other plans of the HSA, the High Deductible Healthcare Plan, stay the same.
And then the Adamus?
Correct, that's the MOU for the grant that Kinder received, so. And then the approval for the, the West Ed, um, MOU. It's, um, it's a partnership that the math departments are doing, um, in, in accordance with the pilot for adoption of materials. So, they're going to be using some virtual reality goggles in their math classes. So, I think this will be exciting. I know they brought them and some of the teachers tried them out, and they just think the students will be, it'll really kind of increase their level of engagement and enthusiasm about mathematics. So, Mr. Toadvine, we may have some, uh, high school students and middle school students that are really excited about what math can do and kind of maybe even gear them toward Mr. Newbauer or, um, RCTC, uh, programs at the MVCTC because it's, it sounds really exciting. So, the teachers that participate, um, get a very small stipend for their willingness to, to try out that pilot. So, it's a great opportunity. And I think that's it?
Yep. Any questions, comments, concerns in regards to those particular items on the agenda? Hearing none, I will take a roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amslar?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next is item six, which is our financial agenda items. A is the authorization for amendment to the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources. It is recommended by the Treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. B is the approval of then-and-now invoices. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the then-and-now invoices as presented. And C is the approval of the financial items A Alpha and B Bravo. May I have a motion for those two items, please?
I move for the approval of the financial items A and B.
Motion by Mr. Daffler?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis, Mr. Espy.
Nothing out of the ordinary with the appropriation resolution and certificate, or amended certificate. So, those are just business as usual. We run those reports when we close the month. And, um, item B, which is the then-and-now invoices, these were invoices that had September dates on them, and we received them in October. So, we're just seeking your approval to be able to pay them with the invoice date prior to the PO date.
Any questions in regards to the financial update? Hearing none, Mr. Espy, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amslar?
Yes. Next on seven is the acceptance of donations. Uh, it is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through the school's O-eighteen account unless indicated otherwise. Sixty dictionaries from the Dayton Elks Lodge, number fifty-eight, valued at one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents to Mark Twain Elementary School, third-grade students. School supplies from the Myersburg Assembly of God Church to all Mark Twain students. One hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the Board of Directors and Management Team at Habitat Condominiums to Bauer Elementary School for student fees and lunch fees. Five hundred dollars from the Ohio State Eagles Ari, number twenty-three oh-six, to the Myersburg City Schools for Destination Imagination. And one hundred and twenty-five dollars from Kathy Sperry to the Myersburg School District for lunch fees. May I have a motion for those acceptance of donations, please?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Motion by Mr. Lewis?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daffler. And again, we always appreciate those donations and any amount to any of our well-needed. So, thank you. Next, uh, it, oh, we need roll call, don't we? Yes.
I was just going to say too, Mr. Amslar, that the Myersburg Assembly of God Church, they give every student at Mark Twain all their school supplies for the year, every single student. Uh, we appreciate all donations, but that's pretty fantastic, I think. That was it.
Any other comments? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amslar?
Yes. Next is the Miami Valley Career Technology Center News and Reports with Mr. Joe Isakovic.
Good evening. The district on October the sixth held their, uh, district's Advisory Council Dinner. I had the opportunity to, uh, speak at, we had over three hundred, I don't think we were here yet. Oh, am I? Oh, okay. Thank you. We had over three hundred members of our Advisory Council, uh, attend. Basically, uh, they're business owners, academia, uh, people that work with us and our, uh, staff on our curriculums and, uh, make suggestions and that. So, it was nice to have them, uh, come out and, uh, enjoy dinner with us. Uh, also, on October eleventh, we had a, uh, banner group, uh, attend our board meeting, uh, and tour the MVCTC facilities. Very appreciative of Dr. Blessing and Mr. Homan and Mrs. Neese and her husband, Don, who, uh, were able to attend. And, uh, pretty much took, uh, a good two hours to, uh, see the facility, and, uh, even then, uh, certain areas were rushed. But, uh, I would open it up to any of you if you would like to make any comments about the tour.
I don't know where to start. I, the expansion of programs and just the, the facilities are just state-of-the-art. Um, the, the dental assisting lab, that was amazing to see that. All the animal areas, of course, uh, that was a hit for me.
The cats.
They have little kittens there, calling my name.
Couldn't get it to leave.
Yes. Uh, I mean, the aviation area is just amazing that our students are able to work on aircrafts and come out of there with a hundred thousand dollar paying jobs, right, according to Dr. Walty. So, that was really cool to see the, um, expansion of our, what was it? Some of the, um, oh, the legal, um, court stenographers and
Yeah.
some of that area.
Our legal area, and this I wasn't aware of until recently, but we have a mark, a mock courtroom that we are constructing, uh, with the judge's bench and witness stand. And, uh, uh, it really is, uh, going to be nice for our legal studies area for our students to be able to actually experience a courtroom, uh, experience, so.
Forensic science, the cybersecurity, it was just so exciting. I, I loved it, so thank you and Dr. Walty for giving your time to give us on that tour. I can't wait to go up and see the kids in action in all of those great areas. It was really neat.
I thi- I think the tour with the eighth graders coming up is just such a great idea to, to get them in there to see what programs they have. Many, many opportunities.
I just really loved the building, how all the light was coming in. I know that when, at the OSBA Conference last year, I went to, uh, one of the sections where they talked about what kids want, you know, the building to be like in high school. And that was their number-one priority is to have lots of light coming in. And you could even see from one classroom, like, maybe cyber, cybersecurity could, um, actually see what the sports medicine people were doing. I know those two weren't the ones that were right across from each other, but that was really cool. And I just couldn't believe how huge it was. It, it was huge. I, it, it was beyond anything I thought it would be. I was so impressed.
It'll be six hundred thousand square feet under one roof. And we walked the spine of the building, the two-story spine. And the lower level is where the, uh, uh, the, uh, labs are. And as you were saying, the students will be able to go up and down the hallways and actually look in at the various labs and what the students are doing. So, uh, we're coming along. Uh, hopefully, we'll be moving into the spine, uh, in December. Dr. Lacy and his team have come up with a moving guide and a, uh, video for everyone so that everyone is in tune as far as moving into the facility. And, uh, hopefully, everything will then be completed by the end of twenty-three, and we'll have everybody back out and maybe even, uh, get you folks that weren't able to attend out there sooner, if we can, uh, you know, work something out logistically. But again, thank you for coming and, uh, uh, really appreciate your support. Uh, some dates, uh, we have upcoming. October twenty-seventh is the parent-teacher conferences from three to seven PM. Uh, November eighth is our next MVCTC board meeting. Uh, November thirteenth to the fifteenth, obviously, is the OSBA Capital Conference, which I'll be attending. And November eleventh is our second-term midterm. Uh, also, uh, you know, we have our student ambassadors that go around to the various schools. Uh, we've got the twenty-seven partner schools, and, uh, our student ambassadors do a good job at, uh, going out and communicating what's going on at CTC for, uh, potential students. Uh, Miami'sburg High School, we have Maggie Montgomery, Christian Cantrell, Gracie Gow, and Taylor Ober. Uh, also, uh, Academics Department, College Credit Plus, we have two hundred and twenty MVCTC students are participating in the CCP this semester, taking a total of three hundred and thirty-two courses with the potential to earn a thousand ten semester hours. Miami'sburg has fourteen students that are participating in that. We're, uh, one of the top four of all the schools, uh, in participation. Uh, also, uh, program highlights this month, automotive technology. And one of our students from Miami'sburg, Miles Parker, is interning at Take Five Oil Change in Miami'sburg. Uh, also, uh, we were really pleased, uh, uh, to have the Miami'sburg and CTC alumnus, Parker Linsky, who is a chef and manager at El Maison, uh, come out, and he visited our culinary arts class and discussed and gave a demonstration about some of the foods that are served at El Maison. So, we're, uh, very proud of Parker. And, uh, the MVCT Skills USA Chapter elected, uh, officers. And, uh, the president is Ashley Torado, who is in criminal justice, and she is from Miami'sburg. Uh, the BPA elected officers, that's the business, uh, business practices. Uh, the parliamentarian is Jeremiah Byrd, uh, computer coding and web applications from Miami'sburg. And on Veterans Day, November eleventh, uh, we're inviting all veterans and their spouses to come out. They can select one free service from our cosmetology students, a manicure, pedicure, facial, haircut, or style. And, uh, uh, snacks will be served by our culinary arts students. And also, on November eleventh, we will have a special lecture we do every year with Mr. Ira Segalwitz, uh, talking about the Holocaust. So, uh, that pretty much covers what we have on tap. So, that pretty much covers what we have on tap. And any questions or comments?
Sounds like a busy few weeks coming up.
Yes, and it's, it's a lot of fun, it really is. And I appreciate your support and good things are happening, so with that.
That they are.
I'm done. Thank you.
Next is our legislative liaison, Mr. Corey Daffler.
Not a lot going on with the election going on. One thing I wanna bring up, that was kinda big earlier last week, the state school board had a resolution presented about the Title IX. Changes that the federal government made, which the Department of Agriculture funds the free and reduced lunches that we get, and if you don't agree with their mandates, they will, they will take the money. So, I just encourage everybody to read the resolution that was presented. They ultimately voted to put it back in committee, I think is because they don't wanna make hard decisions, but I just encourage everybody to read that resolution. That's all I got.
Thanks, Corey. Mr. Lewis, student achievement liaison.
Yes. Earlier, we presented Olivia Taylor with the district student of the month for September. The other building students of the month representatives include from Bauer Elementary School, Michaela White, Bear Elementary School, Gabe Murphy, Jane Chance Elementary School was Emma Bechtel, Kinder Elementary School was Leila Urance, Mark Twain Elementary School, Catherine Aaron, Medlarview Elementary School was Gavin Uckry, Mound Elementary School was Aline Milham, and Miami'sburg Middle School was Bradley Williams. That's all I have.
All right. Next is our Montgomery County Drug-Free Coalition liaison, Mr. Dale Toadvine.
There was no meeting this month, but there will be next month. They decided earlier this year that we're gonna only meet every other month.
Okay. That leads us to District News and Information Vice President Anne Nice.
First, we have the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three Making a Difference Honoree, and it's our Student Resource Officer, Ryan Kopsey, nominated by Brenda Hibbard. Among the many duties that he performs over the summer, Ryan spearheaded achieving quick access to all the doors in the district for all Miami'sburg police officers. Currently, not only do officers have key cards located in their police cruisers, they also have building access with their police key cards and key fobs. Ryan is always looking for ways to make our district's school buildings safer for students and staff. Ryan's full nomination can be read at miamisburgcityschools.org. And then we have freshman Sophie Ivanov. She capped off an amazing freshman season, earning her twenty-first win of the season at the OHS AA District Tennis Tournament by defeating Hannah Faulkner of Butler in round one, six to one, six to one. The win then led her to a match with defending state champion from Mason, the top seed in the tournament. Sophie battled hard but fell six zero, six one. Sophie's twenty-first win ties her with Jada Strickland for fir-, for third place all time in school history for wins by a freshman. So, wow, we used to live right next door to Sophie and I think her parents probably have a couple thousand dents in their garage doors, for sure. Yeah, great girl. And then Miami'sburg Middle School, eighth grade teacher Michelle Dakin will be taking her classes to Highland Memorial Cemetery and Hillgrove Cemetery to put flags on the graves of veterans. This is a longtime tradition that was started by Ms. Dakin over twenty years ago when middle school students were located at Wans Middle School. Her students would walk to Hillgrove in the morning, then walk to Library Park for the ceremony. They would then participate in the parade to, the parade to the American Legion. The American Legion would have a panel of veteran speakers and the students would eat lunch there. Ms. Dakin was awarded the best veterans program in Ohio one year. Wow. A few years later, Jeanie Tovine started taking students to Highland Memorial Cemetery. And then last, we have former student Piper Worley has written and published a book. It is available on Amazon and is called The Side of Our House. Piper and her family are still residents of Miami'sburg. Congratulations, wow.
I know we, we, I think we were gonna try to give the chance to more student achievements, so I apologize, we might wanna rework that report next time, so.
You're welcome.
So, we'll have, uh, Mrs. Nice, we've tagged you on, we want you to read one. We're trying to collect achievement stories throughout the year, so.
Just here to help.
Appreciate it, so we'll get you going next month.
Awesome. Uh, next we have comments. We are going to go to public comments first. Each person addressing the board shall give her and his or her name and address. Each person is allotted three minutes. We have two green sheets tonight, so we have six minutes to speak until the total time of thirty minutes, but we have six. So, we will give a thirty-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During the public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not the time to question an individual board member or district employee. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully, and we will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing comments. Tonight, we have Mr. Taylor and Mr. Hall. And Mr. Taylor, I believe you're up first.
Thank you, Chris. Well, good evening. This evening, I wanna talk to you about the state school board meeting. I attended it. It was quite eye-opening to attend that. The resolution at hand is entitled Resolution to Support Parental Schools and Districts in Rejecting Harmful, Corusive, and Virtuousom Gender Identity Policies. And US District Judge Charles Ackley struck down enforcing these changes and for good reason. For one, this is a responsibly legislative branch and not the executive branch. Secondly, Title IX should not be revised to include LGBTQ protections since their status is not immutable. Have met several that thought they were LGBT but are no longer. Now, secondly, uh, much of what I have to share with you tonight is found in a book called Irreversible Damage by Abigail Schreiber. I started reading this book to educate myself on the topic. That, uh, this is a must-read if you really wanna know more about this topic, and I've actually got copies of the book for you because I was so moved by what I've learned from it. One takeaway from the book is research by Kenneth Zucker, who states, "Some children latch onto gender dysphoria as a way of coping with trauma and other distresses. A therapist needs to question the patient's understanding of gender in order to determine why the patient might have a fixation on the source of their problem." And observed that in many cases in which children have not been socially transitioned by their parents, she found that eighty-eight percent outgrew this dysphoria. Now, here's some of the dangers of this policy. Dr. Littman observed that gender dysphoria is an epidemic that is sweeping our schools, being transmitted as a social contagion, a new word for you, especially among teen girls. Dr. Littman asserts that most of them are misdiagnosed. Affirmation therapy does not attempt to determine the cause of the feeling, but simply affirms what the patient is saying. Now, imagine having a daughter who is in elementary school and she is affirmed in her belief socially transitioning, given chemicals to turn off her puberty that is irreversible. Now, when her peer is mature and she does not, she will be more isolated. If she had not gone down that road, she would have likely outgrew this dysphoria.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, transgender men can invade women's private spaces and crush them athletically. The reality is, men are stronger than women. Now, my Kentucky nineteen eighty-two cross-country time of seventeen thirty, where I got seventeenth, still beats the state record for the girls. Now, Title IX protections extend LGBTQ Trump's parental rights. Think about that, this trumps parental rights. That sets up the situations where districts and parents and children are at odds. So, my, my closing is I encourage you to read the book, Abigail Schreiber, and be vigilant on what is happening. I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Hall.
Yes, thank you. I'm Adam Hall from thirteen twenty-eight Kircher Street. I wanted to discuss the, the current change with the school restroom policy, especially between the middle school and the high school. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Black, he did call me yesterday regarding the issue. Seemed to really appreciate my, my input, but I thought I'd bring it here as well. So, my concern is with the restrooms only being open before school, after school, and during lunch, it's punishment for a hundred percent of the people for five percent of those that are doing wrong in the bathroom. It also makes the roughly fifty-six thousand dollars spent last year, I believe, for the vape detectors and the premises safety, same kind of null and void. My concern is you guys are gonna be facing HIPAA violations, you know, one of the, when I put out the post, one of the students said she was diabetic. She volunteered that information. She may not volunteer that to you, and if you're going to do medical exceptions, you're gonna have a hard time asking without singling somebody out for a medical condition. The other issue is, I believe it's, huh, of course, my phone's not working. It's, uh, there's, in Ohio, revised code, there are limitations for, expectations for restrooms within the schools. Any and all public schools should have one, functional, serviceable, clean, and all that. And one could argue that part of the function is being open and made available. So, I appreciate your time and effort, and I do have one other concern, but it's more so in private and I'm not, because it does deal with an individual, and I'm not sure how to address it at this point. So, yes, ma'am, gladly will. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. Hall. All right. That brings us to board discussion and staff comments. I'll start down with Mr. Corey Daffler.
I like the workforce development. That is near and dear to me. I, I have really liked hearing about that and, um, that's great stuff. Eighth grade, I wish I would've went to CTC in eighth grade. I think that's a very good, very good thing we got going on there. That's all I got.
Mr. Toadvine?
I just would like to say, um, thanks, Joe, for the presentation and to giving us the opportunity to, to go to the, the CTC and, um, I'm sorry, I had to bow out, but it was our anniversary, um, that night.
It's a cheat date, you should've taken one.
Well, honestly, I thought I was gonna get a go-out to get a steak or something. I ended up, my grandson was playing soccer and I had two hot dogs. That was, that was my wife's choice, not mine.
Happy anniversary.
Yeah, I don't ask you to put up with me.
Smart move on your part. Mr. Lewis?
I wanted to bring up again National Bus Safety Week and thank everyone in our transportation department, especially all of our bus drivers. Thank them for all they do with our stu-, our students, families, and just service to our district. And also, um, wanted to thank all of our building principals, it's National Principals Month, and, um, thank them for everything they do to make our district better, so. Oh, and, well, no, that's it. That's it, I'll leave that out.
Okay. Ms. Nice?
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Rupert and Mr. Newbauer for their presentations. They were really interesting. And I also wanted to thank Joe and Mr. Nick Walty for letting us go through the Miami Valley Career Technology Center. It was really a wonderful visit. Also, Mr. Lewis, do you care if I say something about your mother-in-law? She turned a hundred years old this week, last week. So, just say happy birthday to Bobby Swingy, who's been a big supporter of our school district for a long time.
I'll be brief. Mrs. Rupert, uh, thank you for your presentation. It's always nice to hear what's going on in the schools. The blankets, you know, much needed. I think that's a great idea. The, the recyclable to the bench, to the girls running up at, they do it up at Wright State, right? Yeah. You know, and that's just always, and I've seen the pumpkins over there. So, I think we may need to expand that garden a little bit. But it, it's great that the kids do it and they enjoy it, and that's what it's all about. So, Mr. Newbauer, uh, I mean, I'm a big supporter of the joint vocational school and everything that we've got going on at the high school, and I'm just a firm believer that college isn't for everybody. Families always sometimes can't afford it, but you can't, um, narrow a child's learning just because they don't wanna go to college. And, and the more things we get in front of them, um, I'm all for it, so, thank you. I would like to say, um, because this is the last class that I personally coached, which is our seniors tomorrow night, um, I would like to wish those seniors tomorrow night at the football game a successful game, a safe game. Hopefully, we can come around with a win. That would be nice. But, um, senior nights tomorrow night, and I'll be there because I have to do colors as well with the Legion, so, um, so, yeah, I'll move it on to Mr. Eske.
Well, it's, first of all, it's great to hear all the great things going on in the district, so, um, just wanna give kudos to that. It's wonderful to hear those things. Also, I wanna recognize the bus drivers and also principals this month. Both groups of people just do outstanding things for the district and just wanna recognize them. I'd also like to recognize the treasures office team, Marilyn, Nicole, Pam, and Kate, for all of their work. They are able to hold down the fort like they did today. I was in Columbus this morning and I was talking about cash balances and the importance of the state's support of public education. And being able to talk about strength in numbers, like many things, how treasures and school district officials can, um, continue to advocate for funding for public education. So, I'm really happy to do that and I'm really happy to have a team that allows me to do that, so, thank you to all those individuals.
I wanna recognize our senior golf, I'm not, she's not a senior, a junior golfer, Ally Turner. She will be competing in the girls' golf state championship starting tomorrow and Saturday at Ohio State University, so we wish her lots of luck and we're excited to hear how she does. I believe there are seventy-two golfers, so, um, coach was predicting top twenty and I said, "Go for top five," so, good luck to Ally. Our girls' volleyball team was GWOC co-champions this year, and it was, not, not volleyball, excuse me, soccer, sorry about that. The soccer team was co-GWOC champions, and this is the first time they've ever achieved that. So, that's an exciting goal for them and recognition. And it is tomorrow night, it's senior football recognition, senior band recognition, senior cheerleaders, and, and the senior sports, student sports medicine, um, I guess trainers or assistants. So, it'll be a big night tomorrow night. Congratulations to our band, they took first place, was that last week or the week before? Two weeks ago in their competition that weekend, and we are hosting a band competition this Saturday. And we are hosting a band competition this Saturday. So I think Miami'sburg plays at 9:15 and awards are at 9:30. So, and I think it's going to be a little warmer this weekend, so that's good. And the end of the first quarter is upon us. So our students and our staff have successfully made it the first nine weeks of school. So thanks, everyone, that's here tonight in the schools, ladies and gentlemen, for, that's always good to get that first nine weeks under our belt. The rest of the year will fly by. So it's amazing how fast that happens. So, yeah. So thanks, everyone, for being here tonight, our staff, and our presentations, and our speakers. So we always appreciate community input. So thank you all.
A quick thing, and it kind of goes along with School Bus Safety Week. It takes a lot for the transportation to run every day. And so a huge thank you, we have three mechanics that do a fabulous job, and I would put them up against any of them. We always have 100% school bus passage rate when they come through. And a couple of the mechanics went through similar programs like CTC, and they really found their niche. So put a plug in there. And then our bus assistants, they do a fabulous job getting back and forth, helping our drivers with our students on the buses. And then, without further ado, Michelle Reed and Kathy Myers and Jean Wharton do a really good job of jumping in whenever they need to. Jean and Michelle will drive if they need to as well, too. So absolutely make sure we recognize the whole transportation department and what they do. So that's it. I'm willing to train. Anyone would be a sub. We'll train you, so.
That concludes our school board meeting for October 20th, 2022. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Toadvine?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.